...Redevelopment Agency Regular Meeting. Let's go ahead and do roll call, Karen.
Yes.
I forgot my cheat sheet. Councilmember Breitman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember West.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
And Mayor Asher.
Here.
Okay, now we're on to, oh, I'm sorry, the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). Pledge of Allegiance. (inaudible) of the United States of America and here to be public for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any public comments on this agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Karen, are you catching up?
Davis and Atkins?
Yeah, sure. Okay. All right, status report on the Oversight Board, legal expenditures? None, okay. Information and status report from the Chair of the Oversight Board. We haven't met since the last city council meeting. And with that, didn't you meet on February 11, I think? Oh, wait, we have, have we met?
Yes.
Since the last meeting?
February 11, Team Kelton.
Okay. The ROPS, which one was it, 13, 14?
14, 15.
14, 15. Was approved at the last Oversight Board meeting. And we also have a new member representing Peralta. Who wasn't in attendance at the last meeting, but hopefully will be at the next one.
And the property management plan?
Oh, and the long-range property managed, long-range property management plan was also approved.
And Josh.
Oh, and Josh Simon, who represents Emory Unified, will no longer be serving in that role on the Oversight Board.
Is there a new representative from the school district?
Not that I've heard of, does staff know?
No.
Not yet.
Okay. All right, that's all I have on the status report from the Oversight Board. And with that, our meeting is adjourned. Onto what I think everybody might be waiting for, which is the green agenda this evening. The Emeryville City Council Regular Meeting. Get to that here. Okay, we've already had the roll call and Pledge of Allegiance, so we'll move on to item number two. This is the special orders of the day. The first one is the Employee of the Quarter presentation. Deborah Acker and Ian.
Good evening, Mayor Asher and members of the city council. Tonight, we are, we have the great pleasure of acknowledging three of our employees, three police officers, so I'm going to ask them to come up and we'll read a proclamation, so.
Sergeant Alton, and Officer Rojas, and Officer Kellner. Come on up.
Welcome.
How you doing?
Hi.
So, on behalf of the city council, staff, and residents of Emeryville, I am proud to award Sergeant Robert Alton, Officer Pablo Rojas, and Officer Michelle Kellner the Employees of the Quarter Award for the fourth quarter of 2013. Sergeant Alton and Officers Kellner and Rojas have always displayed their professionalism and provided a customer service attitude to the community they serve. These officers take a personal interest in serving the community by providing above and beyond normal police service. On the night of July 27, 2013, these officers responded to Powell Street Plaza where a female passenger in a vehicle reported her uncle was having difficulty breathing. The officers quickly summoned medical aid and began first aid. The officers also attended to the female passenger's 11-year-old son. The family was returning from Southern California where the 11-year-old was receiving cancer treatment. They were unfamiliar with Emeryville. All three officers handled the scene with care, sensitivity, and a level of human kindness that went above and beyond what is required. While there were many unknown outcomes, the officers' actions kept the mother and son reassured and calm. In the end, the patient was stabilized and taken to a local hospital. As part of this employee recognition award, Sergeant Alton and Officers Kellner and Rojas will receive an award plaque, and will have their picture prominently displayed at City Hall, will receive a gift certificate to an Emeryville restaurant of their choice, and will have lunch with the city manager and their department head. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
(applause).
Onto the next special order of the day, we have the introduction of new police officers, Kyle Schrammick, Tony Abagado, and Ross Burrell. Chief James?
Good evening, Mayor Asher and members of the council. I get, I get a chance to really put my chest out tonight, don't I?
Yeah, you do. You're filling half a chamber.
The officers recognized their exemplary service. And I get to introduce the three newest officers to the Emeryville Police Department. Kyle Schrammick, Tony Abagado, and Ross Burrell. Tony came to us via growing up in Fremont. He was born in the Philippines, moved here as a young child, grew up in Fremont, went through Fremont School. He left school and, well, he graduated from, from school and decided that he'd go into the workforce and quickly learned that changing tires for a living at Big O was not what he wanted to do. And he always had a dream about being a police officer. He put himself through a training academy and did well in the academy, and we were fortunate enough to, at the right time, to have him come out of the academy just as we were starting a recruitment. Tony's 27 years old. He passed his field training program a couple months ago, and he's doing an excellent job out there. This is Tony Abagado right here.
Welcome.
I'll introduce all three before I ask them to say anything. Kyle Schrammick was hired at the same time as Tony. We hired three individuals at that time. He was raised in Northern California. In 2009, he decided that his life needed a little bit of excitement, so he joined the U.S. Army. And after serving a year in Korea, he was transferred back to the United States where he was quickly deployed to a year in Afghanistan, serving on the Pakistan border. Tony served in the U.S. Army with distinction and left honorably discharged, but decided that a career in law enforcement was in the books, in the stars for him. Again, he put himself through an academy to fulfill his dream, passed the academy, and again, we were fortunate that the timing was such that he came out of the academy just as we were doing a recruitment. He also finished his field training program a few months ago, and we've been waiting on the third one, Ross Burrell, to finish his program before we brought them all. The third individual is Ross Burrell on the end. Ross is our newest officer. He just finished FTO last Friday. We were fortunate enough to spirit him away from Oakland PD, where he had gone through the academy and served about a year in patrol on there. He was born in Castor Valley, went through the Castor Valley High School, which you'll see in a minute, their mascot was a Trojan. He went on to Chabot College where their mascot was a Gladiator. From Chabot College, he received a full football scholarship to Southern Cal, University of Southern California, where he became a Trojan.
Trojan, yeah.
So, he's, he's always, he's played football his life, but he's never been anything like a monarch or any of the more traditional ones. He's always been a Gladiator. He, again, he, he went through, was hired through the process in Oakland. He had a relationship, as a friendship, with Kyle Rice, who you've met already. He came to Kyle's Swearing In, and I think we made a favorable impression on him because he came over and, and decided to, to come with us. So, we are very pleased to have him. He did a great job in the FTO program, and we're looking forward to seeing great things from the three of these officers, so.
Thank you.
We have Tony Abagado, Kyle Schrammick, and Ross Burrell, and I'll let Tony talk first.[611.48][611.48](applause).
Well, I'm honored to be a part of the Emeryville Police Department, serving the community of Emeryville. Thank you so much for having me, and as well for, from the department. I won't, I won't lay you down, I'll do my best.
Welcome. Thank you. Yeah.
Well, I'm honored to be here. I'm not really one with words, but I look forward to seeing each and every one of you as time progresses, and thank you all for the opportunity. All right, I look forward to getting to know you guys.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you all. I'm excited to be here. It feels great to be in a community where both the administrative support and community support is there, so it's a great honor to be here. So, I thank you and thank the department as well.
Thank you.[663.04][663.04](applause).
Welcome. We're glad to have you here. Welcome over. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Control, I guess.
Hi, nice to meet you. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Go dance.
Welcome, welcome.
Before the chief goes, I just have a quick question. Are we now at full staff, chief?
No. We have reopenings. Okay. Get over here. We have three openings in the police officer classification, one opening in the PSD classification. We are currently in a recruitment. We've opened a lateral transfer academy graduate recruitment, and right after that, and actually it's open also, we've, we're starting to look at entry-level positions to come in and go from there. We're, we're very hopeful that we'll be able to fill those three positions fairly quickly.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 2.3, Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, proclaiming March 2013. This is March 2014, right? Yes, okay, thank you. As American Red Cross Month in the City of Emeryville. And my understanding is that we have some representatives from the Red Cross this evening, Madeline Biskin-Towey, and also Sherri Alesworth, if you'd like to come to...
Good evening, Mayor Asher and members of the council. My name is Sherri Alesworth. I'm a member of the Alameda County Leadership Council, and with me is Madeline Biskin-Towey, a member of the Community Partner Services Team. It is my honor to accept this proclamation from the City of Emeryville declaring March as Red Cross Month. We thank you for this honor. In the year 1943, during World War II, President Franklin D. Roosevelt proclaimed the first Red Cross Month. Since that time, every president, including President Obama, has designated March as Red Cross Month. The key focuses of our chapter are providing disaster preparedness training for families and responding to disasters in the community. For 2013, the Alameda County incidents were 134, or two points, one every 2.7 days. The adults affected were 360, children affected were 219, and families affected were 280. Locally active volunteers are 364, and we have nationally deployed volunteers of 12. Emeryville has been working closely with the Alameda County Red Cross team through Madeline and has recently secured a shelter agreement. Some of you probably know this, but there's a great Red Cross mobile app. This app will inform you about earthquakes in the area. It also shows people how to plan ahead and recover for and after an earthquake. Go to the App Store and search for Red Cross, and you will find Earthquake and install. Plus, this is a free app. We will have our annual Heroes Breakfast Friday, September 5. Please mark save the date. It will be at the Oakland Hilton. We invite you to attend, but we really would like all of you to nominate a local hero from the Emeryville community, and we will be sending you nomination forms. On behalf of the Alameda Leadership Council, we would like to thank you for this proclamation. But most of all, we'd like to thank you and, and the city staff members who have worked closely with the Red Cross to make Emeryville a better-prepared city for all types of emergencies, and we look forward to growing our relationship in 2014.
Thank you.
Madeline, would you like to say something?
I'll say a couple of words. I'll say a couple of words, sure.
Why don't I go ahead and read the proclamation, and then you can speak, Madeline? Would that be okay?
Okay.
Okay, great. Proclaiming March 2014 as American Red Cross Month in the City of Emeryville. Whereas, the American Red Cross, founded in 1881 by Clara Barton, is a leading voluntary agency chartered and authorized by Congress to provide compassionate assistance to people afflicted by personal, local, or national disasters. And whereas, in addition to domestic disaster relief, the American Red Cross offers services that help the needy, support and comfort for military members and their families, the collection, processing, and distribution of lifesaving blood and blood products, educational programs that promote health and safety, and international relief and development programs. And whereas, across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross has recently responded to disasters including hurricanes, tornadoes, floods, and wildfires, the tragedy at the Boston Marathon, and Typhoon Hain in the Philippines. And whereas, in the past year, the 3,000 local volunteers of the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter helped more than 730 families with temporary housing, clothing, food, and emotional support. During 433 local disasters, trained more than 177,000 people in lifesaving CPR, first aid, water safety, and preparedness education, provided emergency communications, counseling, financial assistance, and a caring presence to more than 8,000 local military families, and supported 28 Bay Area hospitals, providing them with nearly 75,000 units of red blood cells, platelets, and plasma to patients in need. And whereas, March is American Red Cross Month, a time to recognize and thank the everyday heroes of the Red Cross, those who reach out to help those in need by volunteering their time, giving, giving blood, taking lifesaving courses, or providing financial donations to help those in need. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Jack Asher, Mayor of Emeryville, hereby proclaim March 2014 as American Red Cross Month in the City of Emeryville, and encourage all residents to be cognizant of the compassion, courage, and civic duty that are inherent in the Red Cross mission to prevent and relieve human suffering. Thank you.
Thank you. Basically, I would like to thank the staff members of the City of Emeryville. And for the last two, three years, we have been working closely together to secure this shelter agreement that just happened a couple of months ago. Sabrina, I think our city manager signed it. So, we are looking really forward to a 2014 where we are going to even work much closer than before and making Emeryville one of the best cities in this area that's well-prepared.
Thank you, and thank you for your work.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, of course.
I'm a proud donor, and I'm almost to my three-gallon pin. But I was just donating this past week, and with this bad weather on the East Coast, blood is in really short demand right now. I think they're looking, they're between 6,000, 9,000 units of blood behind. So, if you haven't given blood, please think about doing it. It only takes about an hour. You can go online, you can donate it, you're in and out. And the one nice thing about donating blood is that they never forget about you, because every 59 days, you'll have a friend. So, please consider it. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you, Karen. Thank you. Okay. Item 2.4 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville recognizing Jim Golden for his many civic contributions to the City of Emeryville. Jim, can you come forward?[1143.91][1143.91](applause).
Thank you all.
Okay, I'm going to read this to you, and then we'll have you say a few words, Jim. Whereas, Jim Golden has been an active member of the Emeryville community for 35 years and more. And whereas, Jim Golden's civic contributions have included serving on the City Council from 1980 to 1984, and on the City's Commission on Aging from 2003 to 2014. And whereas, he has also represented the City of Emeryville on the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District from 1996 to 2014. And whereas, Jim Golden also served for many years as the president of the Emery Bay Village Homeowners Association. And whereas, his commitment to and love of the City of Emeryville is best illustrated as the main organizer of the Emeryville Centennial Celebration in 1996, which included a full day of activities, including a parade with marching bands, antique cars, and fire engines, and more. And whereas, Jim Golden has been a consistent attendee at numerous city council and community meetings, always providing good insight and thoughtful opinions. And whereas, few other Emeryville residents have given so much of their time in making Emeryville the best little city in the East Bay. And whereas, Jim Golden is leaving the City of Emeryville to start the next phase of his life in retirement, although no one believes that he will ever really retire from public service and from being a strong and vocal voice in his community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Emeryville hereby recognizes the many civic contributions of Jim Golden and wishes him well on this next phase of his life. Adopted by the City Council of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held Tuesday, March 4, 2014. Thank you, Jim.
That's very nice. Thank you very, very much. I do appreciate it. When I got the first email from our city clerk, Karen Johnson-Hempel, I thought maybe you guys were going to name a park after me, and I got really, really nervous. I really didn't expect anything for all my years of service. I really did it for the people of Emeryville, and I enjoyed it. It was a lot of fun. And I really didn't expect anything, but it's, it's really, really nice to be appreciated, and I thank you very, very much. I have one last thing. Maurice, there's two lights out on the...[1311.16][1311.16](laughter). Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Before you get too far away here, Jim, we have some members of the public that wanted to say a few words about your service.
Okay, Jean.
You get away with something, right?
Are you going to line up?
So, there's an additional whereas that we need to add to this, if we can. Whereas, Jim Golden has also been a key volunteer for the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts for over 20 years.
Yeah.
In fact, two years ago, he was awarded the first annual Outstanding Volunteer of the Year Award for his outstanding contribution to the art exhibit every year. So, we acknowledge him, and we thank him, and we love his participation.
Thank you, Jean.
Sure. Oh, Sharon.
So, Jim has been a friend of the Artist Cooperative and of the arts for a long time, and through this, we've developed really a, a deep friendship, and also with Carla. And so, on behalf of the Artist Cooperative, Jim, thank you so much for all of your support over the years. Thank you.
It's my pleasure.[1396.29][1396.29](applause). Hi, Papa.
I want to thank you, Jim, for the work you did as the Chair of the Commission on Aging, and everything you did at the senior center, and the way, when there were problems, you hung in there until they got solved. And Ross Moore is fortunate to get you, and I'm sure you'll be running things there before long. I do have one thing to say: Be nice.
And that's what my wife said to me as we walked in the door this evening. Thank you, everybody, for the kind words.
Thank you, Jim.
Bye, Jim.
Okay, now is the time for public comments.
Excuse me, Mayor Asher, there needs to be a vote on the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone need to move it first, or no?
Yeah, move it.
I'll move the resolution. I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Can we add that resolve that Jean wrote before we give him the final?
Amended.
Yeah. As amended.
Thank you, Ruth. So, now is the time for public comments. Any comment on items on this agenda?
We're not on the agenda.
No? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Sabrina?
Sure, thank you. Mayor Asher, I have a representative from AC Transit here tonight, per the request of the mayor, after the most recent incident that occurred at the end of January. The mayor had asked that we have someone come, and so he's here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Asher and members of the council. I'll give you a brief overview first of what, what occurred. The, Lindy, our fuel provider, was providing a fuel delivery that day, and when they were providing the delivery, there was a valve that, in the system, that stuck in the open position, which resulted in, over time, the pressures in their fuel tank increasing to the point where a relief valve acted the way it's supposed to. We have the safety relief valve, so if you get a certain pressure, that it starts to vent. And so, when, once it started venting the, the gas, our staff noticed that, and they pressed the, where we have emergency shutdown valves in the system. That notified Lindy that we had a situation. They responded to the incident. The meantime, our, our staff is very cautious, and they're always want to make sure that we don't have any incidents where we could have anybody injured. So, they also contacted 911 and made sure that we had emergency personnel standing by in case there was something. But the good news is that the system designed, worked as designed. It was, it wasn't a high-pressure release like it was about a year ago. It was a low-pressure, relatively low-pressure release, and it started to release gas until the, the pressure subsided, and then the Lindy folks came on and then switched over the valves to the other bank of safety release devices. Since that time, we've had, we've worked with Lindy and put in some other measures to further enhance the system beyond what it was before. That right now, there, there's another alarm, that alarm sensor in the, in the tank that's going to identify when the pressures start to increase above 140 PSI. The tank, normal pressure is 110 PSI. If it increases, increases above 140, they'll get a notification so they can start to respond and check things out right away, or trip the emergency release device and just shut the system down on their own. And, and that, the relief valve, the safety valves don't go off until 175 and 220 PSI, so there's a big gap in between there, so they should be able to address that. In addition to that, we had Lindy replace all the internal, all the valves that were, had, you know, suspect issues or, or activated during that process. And we've required Lindy to do, have some new refueling procedures related to low-pressure and high-pressure fueling of the tanks to prevent this type of incident occurring in the future. Until that's all in place, we actually have, their technicians are going to be there at every fuel delivery until all those procedures and everything are locked in place. But the good news here was that all the safety mechanisms worked as design, and because when there is, you know, any increase in pressure, you want the pressure relief valves to release the gas as opposed to it continuing to increase until something would happen to the tank. So, that's a summary of what occurred, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I, I have a question. When you say that Lindy responded to the incident, do they respond by phone? Where is Lindy? Where, how long does it take them to get here? Do they show up on site afterwards? What does that look like? What does the response look like?
Yeah, they have, I have actually representatives here, they can actually ask and answer. Tom, you want to answer some of those questions? Come up and they, we have, there are technicians on site almost daily, but on the off-hours or they will have to respond from their dispatch center.
Okay, so normally, the system has a PLC...
Okay, so normally, the system has a PLC that monitors all the different parameters, pressures, temperatures, different flow rates. And so that's equipped with an auto dialer system that actually calls out and it'll phone my technicians that are local in the area. They're based at Richmond, so it's pretty close. And so they'll get those calls from the auto dialer. If we don't have the auto dialer, for example, they hit the E-stop, we'll get an alarm from that. So if it's not an alarm condition and there's something that happens on-site and they... the people on-site feel like they need to punch out the system with the... there's over 11 specific spots where they can just hit a button and it isolates everything. So from that point, we get another alarm and we would get a call out from there. And additionally, we've changed the pressure-setting alarm on the tank. So we do get that alarm now at 140.
Okay, other questions from?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So what type of response time do they have for your employees to show up? Is it one hour? Is it depending on the time?
Typically, depending on what's going on, Bay Area traffic is its own beast, as you know, living in the area. It's really hard to commit to saying a specific amount of time, given the gridlock that does occasionally happen. But like I said, typically, we have at least one person as close as Richmond.
But you have one person that's on-call 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
We have... so at our National Operations Center in New Jersey, they have... that's always manned and they get the alarms. They also get the phone calls if the customer calls a 800 number, they can get through to them and they can just... they can call our technicians on the cellphones and get somebody en route.
But 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
Yes.
Okay. What's your maintenance schedule for all this equipment?
It varies actually by the equipment type and what's going on with the various equipments. For example, the compressors have a different maintenance interval than a motor or a relief valve or, you know, whatever the different components are. There's hundreds of parts on these systems and they all have PMs that are industry standards and that are recommended at the frequency of the original equipment manufacturers. So that's in a computerized database and then that generates a work order based on the schedule or the run hours of the station, whichever is appropriate for that equipment.
So you don't test the system as a system? You test the components within the system?
Yes.
Don't you think you'd be better off testing the system as a system?
We test the whole system together also. The E-stops on the station are interrelated to all portions of the station.
Yeah, but how often do you do that? What's your testing cycles? This is what I guess what I want to know.
On the E-stops?
On everything.
Like I said, it varies per component and there's literally in our maintenance system, there's over 600 pieces of equipment. So to go through the list off the top of my head, I couldn't do that and be accurate on the frequencies when they vary from monthly to six monthly to one year to two years to five years. We have a very robust PM system in place.
Other questions?
I have some questions. I'm interested in how often do you make deliveries to the Emeryville plant?
Typically, about once every week, week or two.
And what is the record of Lindy with incidents that happen, that occur when there's a transfer, when they come and they fill tanks? Who keeps a record of that? What I'm trying to get at, do these things happen on a somewhat regular basis when there's delivery made? Who would keep a record like that?
That would be some... as far as industry-wide or company-wide, that'd be somebody in New Jersey probably. As far as whether this is a normal occurrence, this is not a normal occurrence. However, it is something that the system design plans for a contingency and that's why all of the safeties are set where they're set. And they will go and discharge the gas to a safe discharge point through a vent stack and direct it away from any hazardous areas where it's not going to get ignited. So the system design is designed so that if you have overpressure, then you relieve it to a safe point and you don't break any equipment by relieving it. It's the same type of valve that everyone has on their water heater at home. It relieves the pressure so you don't have the tank on your water heater break. It's very common in the industry to have safety valves and not just for hydrogen, but for any kind of gaseous system. You would have a safety valve to prevent any kind of overpressurization on a vessel.
Do you know if that's... if this kind of incident has ever happened in refueling before?
Let me introduce myself. My name is Stuart Becker. I'm with Lindy. I have 35 years in the industry with a lot of experience with hydrogen. You asked about who has records of incidents. The Compressed Gas Association, all the members in the industry, Lindy, Praxair, Air Liquide, Air Products are members of the Compressed Gas Association. If you wanted to look on their website, they would have.
Well, I appreciate what you're saying that... pardon me, it's not a normal occurrence, but we really don't take people's words for it. I would like to see some records. If it's in... if you keep them industry-wide, I think it's behooves AC Transit to take a look at that and see whether there is some kind of problem with deliveries and whether accidents happening during those deliveries. Once a week, 52 times a year, you're coming into our city and making deliveries and we want to make sure that this is not a normal occurrence. Can you do that, AC Transit?
Yes, we will do that, definitely.
Thank you.
So let me just make a few comments here. These systems, the hydrogen fueling station is unique. There's about 28 in the United States. There's more to come. Hydrogen vehicles are going to be pretty popular, okay? But the liquid hydrogen station where the fuel is kept is about a 50-year-old industry, okay? There's probably 100 liquid hydrogen stations in California alone, about 50 in the Bay Area. It's very common in the South Bay for electronics customers. So liquid hydrogen is around. The liquid hydrogen deliveries, it's manufactured in Ontario in Southern California and we purchase it from a competitor. So this is a very common practice to... it may be unique in the city of Emeryville and I understand that and we will get the information. But it's a safe industry. It's been around a long time and there are a number of safeguards. This particular unit is unique in that, as Tom mentioned, it has a hydrogen fueling station there. It has a bunch of advanced electronics and components there. It is monitored 24/7 besides just calling out a person. There's an onboard computer there that looks at all these parameters. We have a manned center back east that can... will get the phone calls or look online. We can see the entire system on a computer. Tom's technicians, as part of their troubleshooting, if they get a call from the system, will look on their laptop, look at the system, understand what the duress is. If they need to punch it out at that point and put it in a safe mode, they can. We've done extensive training with AC Transit personnel so they understand what's common, what's not common. They have local emergency stops, the E-stops that Tom's talking about, so they can put it in a safe mode. So this is unique to the city of Emeryville, but fairly standard in the industry. But we're willing to...
Go ahead, Nora.
Answer any questions.
I'd like to ask our representative from Alameda County Fire, could you address what these gentlemen are saying?
Yes, ma'am, I can. The gentlemen are actually correct on what they're actually saying. You have to go through a number of safety requirements, NFPA, National Fire Protection, and then also the Uniform Fire Code and Building Code. It's nothing different or unique that we're used to dealing with. As a matter of fact, this is a facility that actually has a lot of these safety mechanisms that are put into place that should, should something happen, as in the case that happened in January, when they were offloading the fuel, that one of their wafers actually, because of the valve, froze a malfunction, actually went off. So what essentially you saw was basically the hydrogen hitting the air, which is probably, because it's a cryogenic, it's minus 450 degrees. So when it hits the atmosphere, what it looks like is a huge plume of a cloud with actually no toxins. So yes, ma'am, I believe, you know, this...
Are there any other facilities like this in Alameda County?
There are, like the gentleman said, I believe they're probably somewhere in the neighborhood, about anywhere from 20 to 50.
Any in your jurisdiction, Alameda County Fire?
In my jurisdiction, ma'am, I'm not really quite sure that we have a number of them in our area, but I do know that there are a number in the Bay Area as well as in the nation.
I could answer that. I know for a competitor that I work for in Alameda County, Fremont is in Alameda County, there's units in Fremont where Silicon Valley started to grow and went into Fremont, there's hydrogen stations in Fremont. I'm not sure. We're building another bus fueling station in Oakland right now.
Whereabouts is that going to be?
AC Transit. Seminary, rather.
Is 14th Street?
It's at our seminary division down in central Oakland, yeah.
Okay. And I just have one other question and it kind of follows along with what Councilmember Kirk Frankman asked. He has the same concern I do, that you test separate components of the system, but I didn't hear a clear answer of how often and how regularly you test the unit as a whole.
So I could answer that. At minimum, the entire system is tested on an annual basis. The components, like Tom says, have different preventive maintenance cycles, but at a minimum, a trained technician comes there and puts the whole system through its paces and has a checklist that goes through and makes sure all the safety devices work, all the critical safety systems work and that the unit is good for the next annual period. In between time, there may be some subcomponents that may come up for testing. The safety...
But there is an annual inspection.
Yes.
And who regulates that? Does some... a government entity regulate it or does the company regulate it?
I'm not sure there's any regulation. I think it's an industry standard that would be discussed through the Compressed Gas Association. So I came from a competitor a few years ago and it was a similar type of industry standard there. For our clients, like AC Transit, they could literally go online, and I think we talked about this at the last meeting, and look at the last inspection and look at this. It's very transparent as to what we do for the clients, look at each delivery and all this is a database that they interface with us.
Well, could those reports be given to the city once a year and say that in Alameda County Fire so that we know that this test has occurred?
I'll look at the availability then.
You know, I mean, it's just a date on the calendar, so just give us a date and then send the reports and send...
We'll get back to you through AC Transit and see how to make that available.
And one last thing, how often does Lindy train with AC Transit employees around the fueling?
Well, we have regular training for that. We try to do it quarterly to go through some type of training sessions and we also look at our emergency procedures on a quarterly basis to make sure that if there is something like this, that we are... or Operations Control Center knows who to call and they can quickly respond to any type of incidents that may occur.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mayor Asher, I have one more thing. I just want to let the public know that we are having a ribbon-cutting finally for Temescal Creek Park and it's going to be on Saturday, March 15th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. It's... we're going to have activities for the kids, a bounce house, snacks, and there will be a contest for the best dressed dog. So please, please come out and hopefully we'll have some nice weather.
All right, thank you. We'll move on now to the consent calendar. I'd like to pull item 5.6. Is there anything else?
Move the remainder of the second.
Could we also pull 5.9, please?
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Move the second?
Aye.
Okay. All right. 5.6, Proclamation and Celebration of the 14th Anniversary of Arts is Education and Designating the Month of March 2014 as Youth Art Month. Actually, get to this in my... Okay, so let me go ahead and read the proclamation and then you all can come up, okay? "In celebration of the 14th anniversary of Arts is Education and Designating the Month of March 2014 as Youth Art Month, whereas every year, the month of March has been declared National Youth Month across the United States, and whereas March 2014 is also the 14th anniversary of Art is Education, a countywide initiative to promote the integration of arts into public education. And whereas the Emory Unified School District and the Emeryville Artists Cooperative sponsor programs to promote youth art through their curriculum and the Emeryville Youth Art Artist in the Community and Artist in Residence programs. And whereas this is the 31st year that the cooperative venture between the school district and the Emeryville Artists Cooperative has provided youth-related art instruction. And whereas the city of Emeryville wishes to publicly recognize and support these youth art programs, its students, artists, and instructors. And whereas these programs enrich our city, residents, and business community. Now therefore, I, Jack Asher, Mayor of Emeryville, on behalf of the Emeryville City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2014 as Youth Arts Month in recognition of the 14th anniversary of the Art is Education Initiative and in affirmation of the city of Emeryville's commitment to youth art education and youth art programs."
Sharon Wilsher, Community Liaison for the 45th Street Artists Cooperative and Coordinator for the cooperative's Emeryville Youth Art Program. This year's student artwork showcase, the showcase that's now on display at City Hall, represents arts learning from pre-K through young adults. And the various programs represented come from a diverse group of arts learning providers. The city of Emeryville's Community Services Program, the Recreation Program, as well as the Emeryville Child Development Center, both include arts in their curriculum. And a big thank you this year to Allison Burner with the Rec Department and Diana Garcia Ortiz with ECDC for providing us with artwork and we squeezed in as much as we could in the link here at City Hall. Several other projects are funded partially through the city's community promotions grants and we all thank you again for your continued support. These include Nancy Carbon dancers, successful dance and movement class programs, rather, at Annie Yates, Collaz Printmaking at Emory Secondary, and the 45th Street Artists Cooperative's Emeryville Youth Art Program now in its 31st year, which I can hardly believe that it's been that long, but bringing professional artists and at this point, over 100 artists over the years into the classroom at Emory Unified, providing instruction and specialized art supplies and the opportunity for field trips to artist studios. At Emory Unified, there are two full-time art programs, one at Annie Yates with Ashley McHugh and the other at Emory Secondary with Sarah Stillman. And we all thank the council for this recognition this evening and recognizing the importance of arts and education in our community. And we hope that during the month of March through March 30th, that the community comes to visit the work. The work, especially from the high school, is really outstanding. Ms. Stillman is here this evening and several of her students are here and I know they'd like to say a few words, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Sharon.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. March is Art Education Month throughout the entire county, but we are the only city that lets us take over the entire City Hall with our work, so we are very, very grateful. My students and I are so lucky to be in this community and I would like to recognize some of our community partners right now so that you're aware of who's coming into our school and all that they're doing. And I know my students want to share a little bit about what they've been doing. They told me my speech was very long, so I'm going to go very quickly and I might leave some things out and I don't know what they're saying. They wouldn't let me see their speeches. But we've had several individual contributions to the class this year. Most recently, Maurice Kaufman came to my class to talk about development and the growth of Emeryville physically and help with our Emeryville History Unit. And he taught us how landfill is actually made and so that was really, really exciting. We've had Emeryville resident and Emeryville Historical Society member Richard Ambro come to teach my students how to use old maps and the items that are on older maps from before Emeryville was incorporated and comparing them and plotting the locations and sites on modern AAA maps. So that was a real aha moment for many of my students just today. We've had artist Sarah Lancutis who came. She is an artist... who came. She is an artist who uses historical images of Emeryville and West Oakland in her work and she explained how she did that in her work. And it was last spring, but Ken James did come to talk to us a little bit about the power of our public art. So we're very grateful for these individual partners, but we have larger partners as well. Cliff Bar has hosted our last two art and music showcase events. They have helped when transporting our instruments to their performance space. They've helped us hang artwork in their gallery space. And I can't tell you what it's like to hear our band play on a stage with lights and a sound system. It's really elevated their performance and how they value their performance. And our students, to see their work hung with lights shining on it is really wonderful. The Cliff Bar staff members volunteer to help us set up and break down the event and they also provide and serve refreshments to our families, which is really wonderful. IKEA has been a wonderful donor as well. They have provided lots of plastic bins to my classrooms so that students can help keep their work organized and lots of fabric for our bulletin boards. But by far the most hands-on partner we have is the 45th Street Artists Cooperative. They have not only provided new shelves for our students' work, we had to leave a lot of things that were built in in our old site, they delivered them and put them together for me. So now that our room looks much more like our old studio. They have donated supplies to Anna Yates and Emory Secondary School, which is just under $10,000 for the past year, $10,000, which is such a gift. And I have to thank my partner Sharon, who whatever I say I need or whatever I say I'm looking for, whatever I say my students are curious about, she finds a way to make it happen. And she does it so gracefully and elegantly and I just am so grateful to your contributions. Thank you so much. Tonight I have three of my seniors who have endured many years with me. We have Alondra Solis, Samara Alcut, and Darrell Thomas, who are going to share a little bit about what arts learning is like for them as students in Emeryville. Thank you.
Welcome.
And I'm going to take pictures if you don't mind.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I'm-
Can you lower the microphone?
A little bit. Great.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. I'm Samara Alcut and I'm a senior at Emory Secondary School. And Ms. Stillman has been my art teacher since the 7th grade and I've been in the district since 2001, so I've kind of know everybody in the Emeryville District. But I've learned a lot being in her art class. I feel like I've learned more than other students at different, that attend different schools. And so it's such, I'm sorry. And that Emeryville is so close together that we have so much partnerships with different communities, people that are around and they donate us, donate the school with lots of art supplies and all this good stuff. And we've been learning about the history of Emeryville. And we had Mr. Kaufman come in and talk to us about it. And we can learn a lot about our history through art and how art is very complex. The simplest things have the most meaning to it. And art is dealing with architecture and just art is life. And I just learned a lot through Ms. Stillman, especially through my job too. We had, we were doing linocut printings and I was like, oh, I already knew that. Ms. Stillman taught me that years ago. So I feel like I'm advanced in my arts and I'm happy being in her art class, especially my last year at Emory High School. And yes, so thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alondra Solis and I'm currently a senior at Emory Secondary School. So the first time I ever had an art class was in the 7th grade with Ms. Stillman. And at the time, I didn't really have an appreciation for art because I come from a family who doesn't see it as a very useful thing. So I'm currently in my fifth year in her art class and I have since then grown to see how art can really impact communities and how people have power through it. And at first, like, art class was just another class for me. It wasn't really anything too important. But over the time, I saw it start to play a role in my daily life. And like, it would help me to relieve stress or to like, send messages out to my community. And I saw how I could use my art practice in the art class to really express myself and explore my identity. So over the years, art has become my favorite subject and it's something I really love and I have discovered through the art program at my school. That's something I really want to pursue later on in my life. It's something that I really could use to empower myself and make an impact in my community.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? My name's Darrell Thomas. I'm a senior at Emory Secondary School. And when I first got to Emory and I seen art on my schedule, I was like, art? Like, I can't even draw, so why would I even take art? So I was like, oh, I'm a failure because I can't draw. So when I first met Ms. Stillman, she was like, hecka cool. And she was like, very uplifting. Like, if you come in her class down, she would like, come around you and bring her good spirits around you and stuff. And learning a lot in her class has been major fun for me. From 7th grade and now to 12th grade, it's like, I look back and be like, gosh, I learned so much about art. And like now, I'm learning about the lonely Native Americans that were in the East Bay. Some know they're right there at Bay Street. And it's, it's like, it's tough seeing what they went through and stuff and what like, they had to do and like, how they got shipped out, kinda. But it was the past. But I still like it and I'm learning a lot from Mr. Kaufman when he came in our class about the history, like the landfills and a lot. And I just love art. And yeah, I look forward to being a good student in her class till the end of the year.
Right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to join you. The school night, so we're probably gonna go out a little early.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say I appreciate all three of you speaking about this. And it's very meaningful to hear what a difference art has made in your lives. And I have the, of the personal opinion that good art can uplift and provide hope. And when things get tough and you kind of lose perspective, that art can kind of regain a larger perspective on life. So it makes things go a little bit easier. So anyway, thank you. I'm glad you've found meaning in that and I wish you well in the years to come. And before you know it, graduation will be here.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Anyone want to move the last two?
I'll move item 5.6. Is that what you mean?
One second.
I have a comment on 5.9.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry Jennifer. Let's go ahead and do 5.9 then. Sorry about that.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of highlight this for the public. This is our community development block grant funds, which we allocate each year. And the change this year has been to shift some of the funding, which we had used and combined with redevelopment funds to do housing rehabilitation in the city. With the loss of redevelopment, those funds have been greatly diminished. But what I found refreshing with the staff recommendation this time was to significantly increase the funds towards homelessness services in the immediate area. And not only those additional funds, but also a program for our police services to better assist the homeless population. And I just wanted to highlight that because I think that's a significant and important shift. And I know one of our citizens, Andre Carpio, has many times brought this up to our attention. He's not here this evening, but I just kind of wanted to give a shout out to him for continually raising this issue and that we're responding in this way. So with that, I'll move 5.9.
Second.
All in favor?
Actually, we, yeah, we took a vote, but I do have a question. In the past, I'm not sure whether this is CDBG or some other source of funding, but we've done East Bay Community Law Center before and that's not on the list. And so I just was wondering if you had some comment, because that's a legal service for people who really can't afford other legal options.
That, the East Bay Community Law Center has been funded through our community promotions grant and that is general fund, it's not through the CDBG process.
Okay.
So it comes in our regular budget process.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's hard to keep track of all the funding streams.
Yep. Okay, item 6.1, under public hearings, resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville vacating a portion of the Sherwin-Williams site that was dedicated to the city to be used for construction of Horton Street bypass in accordance with Streets and Highway Code, Section 8335.
Good evening, Mayor Asher, council members. This is first of my two items on the agenda today. Both the items are more of the housekeeping in nature. The first one is regarding the vacation of Horton Street bypass. In 1994, Sherwin-Williams Paint Company made an offer to dedicate a portion of their property for the eventual construction of the proposed Horton Street bypass. The bypass was approved as part of the Chiron Navna Waters Planned Unit Development. And this is the PUD site plan for the full build-out. What you see in red is the property lines of Sherwin-Williams. And what you see in yellow, attached yellow, are the land portions that we are talking about, that was dedicated for the bypass on Sherwin-Williams property. And this graphic kind of gives you a little bit, zooms into the actual lands that are being talked about. So the offer of dedication was memorialized in the MOU in July 94. The MOU provides that the realignment of Horton Street is not under construction by December of 2010 and the city is obligated to quitclaim any interest in the property. The roadway has not been constructed and the city has received a request from Sherwin-Williams to quitclaim the interest and thus the city is obligated to terminate its interest. So the government code, Section 750, provides that an offer of dedication and the right to accept the offer may be terminated in the same manner as provided for summary vacation of streets. So that's why this is being called a vacation of street when we actually don't have a street there. As the deadline for construction of the Horton Street bypass has passed and Sherwin-Williams requests that the city vacates its interest in land dedicated for the construction of the bypass, staff is recommending that the City Council approve the resolution that follows the procedure outlined in the Streets and Highway Code, Section for the Vacation of Streets. And the timing for this should be obvious. Sherwin-Williams is expecting to put in an application for a divestment proposal and they would like their property to be, not have easements or offers of dedication imposing on it, so have a clear title on their property. So that concludes my presentation. We do have somebody here, not so much from Sherwin-Williams, but one of their representatives. If you have any questions, either from me or Joe Ernst, we would be happy to answer it.
Okay. I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone say? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Council-
Move the resolution.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
It is what it is.
Seems pretty straightforward. Okay, all those in favor?
Good presentation.
Aye.
Aye. Onto item 6.2. And Maru is back up. Introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, amending the planning regulations by adding Article 18 to Chapter 5, and on and on. Maru.
Okay, so again, this is more of a cleanup proposal rather than anything of big substantive content. The California State Bill SB 2 obligates cities to establish a zoning district that allows emergency shelters as a land use permitted by right. It also requires supportive and transitional housing developments to be considered as residential uses, subject to the same restrictions that apply to other residential uses of the same type in the same zone. The city's planning regulations are in compliance with the emergency shelters, a portion of the SB 2, as shelters are allowed by right in the mixed use with residential south, MERS zone. And the supportive and the transitional housing are included in the regulations under the residential use category. And what we are going to be doing here is a little bit of more refinement and I will come to that in a minute. So one of the refinements to the emergency shelters is adding performance standards for shelters. And the reason why we are doing that is that the standards aim to ensure that if an emergency shelter is proposed, there is a mechanism to regulate the facility so that they are compatible with the surrounding users. So we do have, we are proposing a number of standards for these shelters, which are allowed by right in certain portion of our city. And these were arrived at by looking at standards in other cities, as well as talking to planners who have shelters existing in their cities. So one is regarding the number of beds. The one is requiring that there should be a waiting area of a certain size. Room for outdoor activities and the hours of operation in the outdoor spaces. There's a location requirement so that no shelter can be established within 300 feet of any other shelter and distance between the two shelters, how they are to be measured. Oops, oops, oops. The other one goes about the management plan. This is to ensure that the operator has enough training, staff training, maintains neighbor relations, has a plan for security and the screening of residents to ensure compatibility with services provided at the facility. And also, there is a master plan for the programs for the residents. There's a required standard regarding the on-site staffing, how much staff is needed for so many number of beds. And then of course, that the facility needs to be in compliance with the federal, state, and local regulations, as well as be in compliance with various life safety regulations. Regarding supportive and transitional housing, the proposed change we are doing is subdividing the supportive and transitional housing categories into single unit, two units, and multi-unit classifications. And our current regulations, we do have supportive housing and transitional housing development and is considered a residential use of property, but these are not subdivided as other residential uses into one and two unit and multi-unit. So what is happening is that this happened due to an oversight. So there's a table in our planning regulations where we need to make the change and divide the, this use group into, divide them further into two standards. So this is the table that I was talking about. So as you can see, the supportive housing, which is being now crossed off, was just one line. And now this is divided into two categories, single and two units, and then multi-unit. The same thing with transitional housing, which are then divided into single and two unit and then a multi-unit as well. So these changes makes the two categories consistent with the residential types, that is the single unit, two unit, and multi-unit residential, like single-family residence and, you know, apartment complex. The Planning Commission did look at this and they unanimously approved a recommendation for the project at the January meeting. And we are recommending the council approve these amendments as adoption of these changes would fulfill a policy of our housing element that pertains to compliance with SB 2. The implementation of changes required by SB 2 is necessary action and is required for certain eligibility of grants. And this compliance with SB 2 would make the city's next housing element eligible for the HCD's streamlight update option. So it makes our life as staff easier. So that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Maru, this is essentially a house cleaning item.
That is correct.
And with a unanimous decision on the part of the Planning Commission?
That is correct.
Jennifer, did you want to ask something?
I just had a question. You have reference here to the housing element and I know that we're beginning that process and I wondered if you could just do a brief timeline of when we're going to see updates to the housing element.
I'm going to refer this to Charlie, since I don't do the housing element myself.
The Planning Commission will be having a study session on the housing element at their next meeting on March 27th. I'm just looking at my tickler file here. I believe that will be coming to the council for a study session on April 22nd. And then, you know, on through the rest of the year. And then, you know, on through the rest of the year. We have a deadline of next January to have it adopted and submitted to HCD, but you have to incorporate all of HCD's comments when you have it adopted. So our plan is to bring a sort of what we're referring to as an HCD draft of the housing element to the commission and council this summer for your, not adoption exactly, but approval. And then we'll send that off to HCD, see what comments they have, make those changes, and then bring it back to you for adoption. The goal is actually to get it adopted in December.
Thank you.
And when is the community meeting?
The community meeting is next Thursday, I think it's Thursday, March 13.
And where will that be?
Right here in the council chambers.
I have a question. Earlier tonight, we, there was reference when the Red Cross was here to the MOU signed for an emergency shelter, which I understand for the next few years has been located at the senior center. So what we see tonight is a shelter up to 60 beds. I was wondering how many beds there would be if we opened up a shelter at the senior center, an emergency shelter, what the capacity there would be.
I don't have that answer, but I can send that out to the council. Other questions?
Do you know whether it's within our new requirements that we're outlining here?
I haven't heard of this before.
I don't know.
So can't really give you an answer now, but we'll have to look into it.
Well, I think if we pass this before we know whether the Red Cross-designated shelter even fits this, this seems premature to me. And it seems like something that should have been...
Passed this ordinance?
Correct. Because if the Red Cross-designated shelter doesn't fit this, then we're...
Aren't they talking about two different things?
Yeah, I feel like they're two different things as well.
The Red Cross is emergency shelter, so it'd be something that would go up rather quickly.
Right. This is a permanent shelter.
This is a permanent shelter.
Could be built.
Has building codes and...
This is, yeah, but the title says for emergency shelter.
I thought it was emergency, for example, homeless individuals. Shelter for people who are on the streets.
Not in case of emergency, but emergency shelter.
Can someone define emergency shelter for us? Is this ordinance?
Define, do you have the definition, Maru? Just a second. There we go.
It seems to me that in the, if there were a disaster and you set up an emergency shelter, it's not something that we'd be permitting at that time.
That's right.
This is more of a permanent...
The definition in the planning regulations is, "Emergency shelter is housing with minimal supportive services for homeless persons that is limited to occupancy of six months or less by a homeless person or family. Medical assistance, counseling, and meals may be provided."
Correct.
So it seems like it's really talking about homeless shelter.
It's really a homeless shelter, but...
Or temporary shelter.
As opposed to a disaster shelter.
Right, exactly. SB 2 calls it an emergency shelter, so that's the terminology we use. But it really is a homeless shelter.
Move to read by title only.
Is that definition included in the ordinance itself?
The ordinance that's before you? No, because it's already in the planning regulations.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Excuse me, we need to do... We need to open the public hearing. Anyone with comments on this item? Okay, with that, the public hearing is closed. It's been moved and seconded. For read by title only.
No objections, I take it?
No objections.
It was Davis and Brinkman.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending the planning regulations by adding Article 18 to Chapter 5 of Title IX of the Emeryville Municipal Code concerning standards for emergency shelters, and making modifications to Table 9-3.202 in Section 9-3.202, uses permitted, conditionally permitted, and prohibited concerning supportive housing and transitional housing.
Move approval of the ordinance.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ready to move on, Karen? Yeah, okay. We'll now move on to item 8.1.
I propose law and miracle.
I'd second that.
Can I make a comment before we actually...
Sure.
...take a vote on this, which is just, I am just amazed at the individuals who applied for this committee.
Yeah, it's stunning.
And I just wanted to kind of throw out a few highlights. We had seven people apply, and there's only one position because the council decided last year that we would limit the number of folks who officially serve on our advisory committees to nine. This has been hard for the council in the past, and so we've tended to appoint lots of additional people. And I think it's wise to have a limit to the number on a committee, but anyone can attend the public art committee meetings. But these seven folks who applied range from someone who's lived in our city for four months to someone who's lived here for 17 years, people who live in single-family homes and in the tallest tower we have, people, I mean, there's an attorney, there's someone who works for the Exploratorium, there's someone who directs a public art center, a filmmaker, documentary filmmaker. It's just a remarkable, and I didn't mention everyone, I'm not trying to leave anyone out, but I was really moved by the quality of this applicant pool. So I think it speaks highly, and many of the applicants mentioned how important public art is in Emeryville, and how they're inspired by that, and that's why they would like to serve on this committee. And we saw this earlier, I kind of wish we'd had this item right next to the art as education piece when the students were still here, and Ms. Stillman, the teacher, because there's this thread, and Sharon, you represent a lot of that, but there's this real thread honoring public art. So I just wanted to recognize the folks who applied.
Sure, go ahead, Sharon.
Thank you so much. I have to say that what you just expressed is what our committee felt as well. I mean, it was pretty amazing. And I think that it's included in the staff report, that one of the things that we discussed was wanting to keep people engaged. And as you said, the meetings are open to the public, but usually when we have a selection panel, we, the composition of the panel usually includes a community representative, and also sometimes we have subcommittees working on something, you know, doing some research, et cetera. And you don't actually have to be a member of the committee. There can also be subcommittee members who are not, and so we actively discuss that in terms of hoping to keep these folks engaged, because it was very impressive.
Merker has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item 8.2, proposed a new StopWaste.org fees and programs. Councilmember West.
Yeah, I serve as Emeryville's representative on the Alameda County Waste Management Authority, which is also known as StopWaste. And recently, I just, I wanted to bring this to council. We are in the process of making decisions on some new fees, and I assume that you may have heard about it, and I wanted to be sure that the council was aware, and if you had any questions, you could ask me. And if I can't answer them, the StopWaste staff, who I didn't think needed to attend this evening, are happy to attend a future meeting if we would like further discussion. So let me just quickly identify the two different items, and I just want to say that I think it's incredibly confusing that StopWaste is doing two different things at the same time. It's unfortunate, because with any public entity, things get confused when that happens. But one thing you may have gotten in your mail at home is something that looks like this. And this went to every garbage account holder. So if you live in a multifamily residential, like I do, and there are 12 units, there may have only been, and there's one account, there may have only been one mailed to your residents for the account holder. Watergate, I have no idea, but there's 1,249, I think, units, and so I don't know if that means you got one, or if everybody...
Doesn't look familiar.
Okay, doesn't look familiar. So I just wanted to make sure that folks know about this. What it is, is it's an information piece that is designed to really help educate and also create a certain healthy competition to get the communities within Alameda County to further reduce the good stuff that you're putting in the landfill, into the garbage. There's waste characterization studies, they actually go audit people's garbage cans just to try and understand best what is in the garbage. And if there's paper in there, we know what to do with paper, it's not put it in the garbage, you're supposed to recycle it. If there are cans in there, if there's plastics that can be recycled, if there's food scraps in your garbage, all of these items have another place to go. And so with this education piece, we're hoping to actually move Alameda County, we're already a national leader in terms of diversion away from landfill, but we have not reached our goal, and our goal is in 2020. And we want to get less than 10% of the good stuff in our garbage. And part of this, we've coached in economic terms, that actually, we are throwing away things that could go in our marketable, our marketable materials. And so if we could put them in the right place, if we could make compost out of it, which is not only good for the earth, but also is something, a commodity that can be sold, same with recycling materials, we could actually put that much more money into our local Alameda County economy, create jobs. So instead of putting in the garbage, put it in the recycling, put it in the compost green waste bins, and we would infuse our economy with more money. This flyer, or this information piece, has real numbers for Emeryville. It talks, it compares Emeryville with our other jurisdictions in Alameda County. In Emeryville, here's what's in our garbage containers. 72% is garbage. 10%, though, was recyclables, and 18% was compostables. So we can do better. And this compares, this little wheel spins, and you can look at Hayward, and Oakland, and Piedmont, and Berkeley, and compare how Emeryville's doing with our neighboring cities. And this will help us to do better. It also breaks it down by different sectors in the business, so restaurants unfortunately still have 40% compostables in their garbage. That's something that I know we've worked, our staff has worked with restaurants in town about. So it breaks it down by different business entities as well. This fee is called a benchmark fee. It's being charged to every garbage account, and the amount for a single-family home that has one large garbage bin is, oh, I'm going to get the number wrong, it's $1.51, I believe, per year? Let me look that up and make sure I'm saying it right. I think this was included in our questions at the end of our packet. I think it's $1.51, let me find that chart, so sorry. Yeah. Oh, sorry, it's $1.81 per year. So if you have one garbage cart, that's $1.81 per year that you're paying for, not only, it's not just actually this piece of mail, which costs all of 30 cents to make and 20 cents to mail, but it's paying for the data collection to provide this information and then compare it in future years. If you have an account with more than a garbage cart but less than four cubic yards per week, then you will pay $7.24 per year. So in my multifamily residential, that's what we'll pay per year, $7.24. And then if you have larger garbage account, more than four cubic yards, like Watergate, you would pay $21.72 per year. So it somewhat changes according to the amount of garbage that you produce, and it's according to your account size. So that is what's called the benchmark fee. There's another fee that is also being considered by StopWaste, and this one is not according to garbage account holders, it is according to the property tax rolls. So every unit, every dwelling unit in Alameda County will pay a new household hazardous waste fee. And the household hazardous waste fee, you were informed of, if you own a residential property in Alameda County, you got a letter. It was a white letter in a white envelope, and I tried to find mine to bring in, and I'm sorry I couldn't find it before the meeting tonight. But this fee is being, we notified every property owner, and if someone does not want this fee to be put into effect, there's the opportunity to protest this fee. And as of March 26, when we have our next StopWaste board meeting, we will, the register of voters is counting the protests against this fee to see if we can, if the board is informed to go ahead with the fee or not. The proposed annual fee is $9.55, and that's per household. And it doesn't matter if it's a single-family home, if it's an apartment or condominium, but every dwelling unit will, on their property tax, if this fee were to be approved, pay $9.55 per year. The reason we are considering this fee at all is because household hazardous waste are all of the items that you can't put in the landfill, you can't put in the recycling, you can't put in the compost. And these items need to go to a special facility. And unfortunately, I think, the hours of those facilities are short, and they're confusing. And so far, the funds that have supported those services have come strictly from our landfill tipping fees. So that's a per-ton fee that's assessed at the landfill. Well, because we're all recycling and composting more, our amount of landfill garbage is going down. And as that amount goes down, the fees that we collect on that amount of garbage is also going down. And so our revenues that pays for this important service of household hazardous waste has been diminishing over the years. And the purpose of putting this $9.55 per year fee is to have a steady stream of revenue. This fee will only last for 10 years, it will sunset after 10 years. And if we actually have additional revenues that go beyond what we expected, or if the costs of our household hazardous waste program are lower than we think, this annual fee will be reduced even within those 10 years. So it's not going towards other services, it's merely paying for that. And one of the questions I raised at StopWaste is why is the fee the same for a single-family home as it is for a multifamily residential unit? And StopWaste, actually, as we discussed this at our next meeting, we'll be giving more information on that, but the waste characterization studies that have been done at the state level show that there is not a difference between the household hazardous waste that's generated by the two different kinds of residential units, although for some of us, common sense makes me think that, you know, a small apartment would have less household hazardous waste than a large, single-family home. This is things like paint, you know, fertilizers, pesticides, household chemicals, the things you keep under the sink locked so that your toddler can't get them. And yet, it's been pointed out that multifamily units, apartments turn over more quickly, and household hazardous waste tend to be what turned in or taken to the centers often at the change of a household as well. So we'll find out more information about that, but if anyone on the council was interested in that, I'm happy to pass the staff report along to you when it comes out in a few weeks. And you're also welcome, of course, anyone from the public to attend the StopWaste meeting on March 26, which is at 3:00 in the afternoon, it's a Wednesday. So if anyone has any questions, I will try and answer them, and if not, we can, again, call someone from StopWaste to be present at our next meeting. I told them I would try and talk about it this time on my own.
Any questions from council? No? Okay. And no action is necessary on that item?
Nope.
That was just an information. Okay. Moving on to communication and reports, anything from department heads? Charlie?
I have a report for you on the Planning Commission's last meeting on February 27. They had one short item on their agenda, which was the annual report on the implementation of the general plan and the housing element. They did approve that report for forwarding to the city council, and then for you to consider and to forward on to the state office of planning and research, and the state Housing and Community Development Department. And that report will be coming to you at your next meeting on March 18.
It's already been to housing.
Yes, thank you. It has.
Anyone else? Department heads? No? Councilmembers?
I have an item.
Yep.
I'd like to ask Karen to look into some FPPC rules. I got a handout at one of my regional meetings about changes in how public bodies are supposed to vote, and how the minutes and things are supposed to be memorialized. So if people come in late after roll call, the times are supposed to be indicated. If someone leaves early, the time of departure is supposed to be indicated. And each person... And each person is supposed to be, their votes are supposed to be registered kind of individually. So I was at a meeting where the chair was confused about whether we needed to do a roll call vote on every single thing, and the legal counsel said no, but needed to kind of verbally affirm for the public record that either of it was unanimous or whatever. So these are changes that took effect January 1.
That has been standard practice in the city for many years.
Yeah, well, yeah, there are some FPPC changes, so I think we should get a handout about what they are.
I will check, but the things that you mentioned are things that we've been including in our minutes since before I became city clerk, so about 10 years or more.
No, wait, wait. I think what you're asking for is just a handout of what the new rules are.
That's correct.
Good, good. Thoroughly clear.
Yes. Other councilmembers? Reporting on meetings attended? No? Okay. We have listed here the community advisory body vacancies. There's two with the Child Development Center, one on the Commission on Aging, one with the Finance Advisory Committee. But we filled that one. Oh, yes, okay. And we filled the one with the public art evening, and we have another vacancy with the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District. And with that...
And we actually have one...
Have to get someone on that.
Have to get someone, we do.
Mayor Asher, and there is one more that I just got, I think, yesterday or today, and that's the Housing Committee.
Okay.
Oh, you're right.
Okay, thank you, Karen. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good going, Jack.